Hello, um, I suppose we start with communication. Um, do that. We're gonna head here. As a prayer, uh, dear God, thank you for this meeting and today for youth and government. Please let us have a good meeting and make some pretty wise decisions, get some good input, and have a good time. Uh, so, well, I'm glad we, sorry.
We're probably out there.
My pleasure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Council of Cape Girardeau, uh, City Council of the City of Cape Girardeau, it's your call to order. Uh, Clerks, we, maybe we have a call.
Mr. Greeter?
Here.
Mr. Greaser?
Here.
Ms. Hagan?
Here.
Ms. Trup?
Here.
Ms. Toad?
Mayor Boss?
Right.
Ms. Westwood?
Present.
Now, please, I am doing the proclamation. Okay. Um, proclamation is, whereas local government is the backbone of our democracy and the bedrock of our legal system, and a testament to the liberty, freedom, and right to self, to elected self-government, and whereas citizens of Missouri rely upon local governments to deliver essential community services such as clean water, police, and fire protection, and whereas the continued success of our local government in meeting the needs of our citizens is a key element in maintaining the overall quality of life in Missouri, and whereas the rich state street of local governance in Missouri is represented by thousands of hard-working citizens, citizen officials, many of whom serve without compensation, and whereas through the education and awareness, the importance, importance of local government, governance can be communicated to the citizens, state legislature, and the news media, media, and whereas recognition of local government's accomplishments could give Cape Girardeau residents a better understanding of how essential local services are provided, and whereas establishing an annual Local Government Week would focus attention to the need for strong, independent, and active local governments in this state and recognize the value of contributions made by the residents. Um, whereas to celebrate Local Government Week and to involve in the public and their local government, Cape Girardeau hosted Friends' Department Day and celebrated Youth and Government. Now therefore, may it resolve that I, Jackson Boss, student mayor of the city of Cape Girardeau, do hereby claim April 28th to May 4th, 2013, as local government. Okay, at this time, um, if the City Council or City Management or any staff have any communication or, or, or. No? Okay, uh, next, next topic. Does anyone wish to appear before the council regarding any item on the agenda or not on the agenda? Uh, realize that you would have to, those who appear must take their name and address for the record and.
Good afternoon, uh, Mayor and City Council, City Manager, my name is John Boss of the 834 of Augustus Drive. And it's rare when someone comes before the council and does not have a complaint, so that is my objective for today. I just wanted to say thank you for your service to our community. I know you don't get a lot of recognition and congratulations for that, but thank you for what you do. You are making a difference in our community and for our future.
Thank you. Any other notices? Oh, okay, easy, um. Sorry.
Good evening.
Yeah, good morning.
My name is Gina. I live, um, at 2533 South Pacific, and I'm coming to you today because I have a concern about the safety of our neighborhood. And as it's getting warmer, more people are choosing to come to eat outside, which is fine. I don't have a problem with people, um, socializing and enjoying the nice atmosphere. However, when too many people come to eat outside that area, or, it does get a little scary to deal with people like other than they are. On a, it's, uh, it's really, really dark. And I think if I could at least see who they were, maybe I'd feel more comfortable. There are no street lights. There are lots. You say that you have a policy that you put them at the corner of the blocks, but I live in a block. It's dark, and I can't see who's in my home. And I am, I live by myself, and it's a safety issue for me. And I want to know what you're gonna do to, is your job to protect the citizens in your city that you represent. And I want to know what you're going to do to get light in my neighborhood so that I can feel safe in the place that I was born and raised and grew up. And I'm gonna hire you to do it, and how soon is this already done?
Okay, well, I understand. There's an issue of safety, I understand. Um, so, I suppose the easiest thing would just be to install another street light in the middle of the block, so, um, so you, you, is that something you'd do?
I think that should be our first order of business. It seems like a good idea, I suppose, because I've seen other families who have similar issues. I know in my neighborhood I have that issue. So, I think that'd be a good order of business to take care of.
Okay, um, you guys think we can have something about that?
Um, I'll have to check on that, um, if I can get back to you soon as possible.
Okay, that's good. Um, as far as the timeline is concerned, yeah.
We could probably get that in within the next month or two. Um, it'll take some arrangements, but soon as possible, I'll let you know.
I would certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, I suppose that's it for the current, because you can go on to the next, uh, agenda. Uh, for the items of discussion that we have, uh, the, the first item that we do have, um, is the urban deer hunting management, which is 13-01. Um, the council has anything that we might discuss about this?
Uh, yes. City Manager, do you know the cost of trapping, live trapping a deer and releasing it back into the wild?
Um, no, I don't. Chief, would you like to provide this with, is that correct?
Our estimates, depending on what trapping deals, would be about thirty, fifty dollars a deer.
And also, City Manager, do you know how long a deer who is trapped from the city and moved to a population outside of the city, what their life expectancy is?
Chief, do you know?
Yes, with the, the type of deer we have that we are currently dealing with, they, um, are a little oversensitive. They may not react as well to trapping as some deer at other locations. So, the life expectancy is a little bit lower for them compared to other groups of deer.
City Manager, do you know a general number of about some of the deer highly considered in Cape Girardeau?
Um, I'm pretty sure it's between around a hundred and fifty and, uh, one twenty-five.
So, it seems here that it's been passed to not, um, you, urban deer management, however, I think that we should bring back the issue because it seems that it hasn't been solved and deer are still entering people's yards and in cars. So, I think that we need to maybe not make such direct promotion, but, um, look back at this issue.
So, the issue still obvious as Santa's striking into the yards, there's accidents, but, um, not necessarily want to take action against killing the deer. Um, does anyone else have any, like, opinions or ideas as far as getting deer out of the city, other than killing them, like, or trapping them, or just opinion in general?
I feel as well, which is also an issue. I don't know as to how trapping would be quite so cost-effective considering the number of deer that are within City Limits. However, I feel that the urban deer hunt would be a very good idea as long as there were those limitations of educated hunters with the permission of the landowners on a certain area of, amount of land. So, I feel as though we should re, um, put this to a vote, so, in the city, of basically the same thing.
Maybe we could put it to a vote, um, during an election time when, uh, more people will outvote instead of just, like, any people.
And my other question was, City Manager, do you know exactly where the largest population of deer is, where it would most affect the rest of the city or resource of that?
Uh, let me see one moment. Um, it seems that it's around, wait, can you repeat the question once again?
Um, where are the biggest population of deer at in the city?
Um, okay, so it seems mostly in neighborhoods next to, like, open tree areas where the deer may find food and shelter. So, um, see, mostly around parks, maybe, uh, like, uh, homes around the river, maybe, because I see a lot of open, um, woods and open areas around there, and also around, like, outside, like, the border of our City Limits where they can just come straight in and, uh, do what they please.
So, maybe as opposed to having just an open deer hunt where they can hunt wherever you are, maybe it would be most effective for us to say, maybe, certain areas, where some, there are a large population of deer, there would be that possibility?
Well, the, they would already have to have the landowner's permission. Where on the public property, I believe that they would already have permission, since how the city would be more instituted, if they could put a, like, specific plan, the limitations on, like, we don't want this in certain areas. However, otherwise, I believe that private property, if it's not a problem for that person, I don't see as how they're gonna say yes, hunt it, because there's so many deer who make their impression work.
Right, but I'm just saying along with the permission, maybe just send more urban resources there as opposed to all there.
But what resources are you looking for?
Um, people that would want to go out and, um, hunt the deer at war as well, maybe putting traps in those areas, though they aren't as much like earlier, it's cost-effective for us because of the numbers. Um, but if it were to choose to go that route, then maybe it would be more effective for us to get some of the private property that parents.
City, uh, City Manager, do you know how much it costs to get a deer killed in the city as opposed to paying for it?
Well, I don't know exactly, but I have to say it's probably pretty costly.
So, that would be more expensive to shoot a deer than to rent the deer to you and not rent it to you?
I would say not to the city, but I mean, more costly towards the hunter.
So...
As opposed to the city will pay for the trapping.
Okay, so to me, it makes sense to have a deer hunter hunt the deer as opposed to the city maybe the deer because it would save money for taxpayers as well if urban deer hunting was going to actually...
Not only that, but if the hunter would be paying for it, it's something that they want. They're paying for something they want. They're essentially buying this deer that they shoot with this tag. So, they're paying for a, a service that they get in return as opposed to taxpayers paying for a trap to be put out that may or may not eventually affect them.
Well, Council, I think you should also put into effect where these deer go after they've been killed. Do they get dumped? Do they get, uh-huh? What happens to the waste of these beers that we're trying to kill off to get out of our community?
I agree. Are we, are we donating, maybe, um, maybe the deer meat or just hanging it on our lawn?
When deer are killed, they are processed for their meat and any other items of use from their body, so usually most of the deer is kept to use in other facilities.
Yeah, City Manager, as far as, like, trapping the deer after they've released them out, if you're offloading food back to the station, just be trapping them?
Yeah.
Or would we move them into a community altogether, or?
Um, well, it seems deer are like anybody else. They can always come back to their community where they feel most comfortable, but maybe we can set up some type of parameter where it won't be possible for them to come back into the community, or maybe not. We, um, it's not set in stone. It's something we should really look into, but it's a high possibility.
So, do you know of any of the reasons they try to, other than preventing their deer from trapping, trying to deer away, possibly something like, like, get rid of the resource, or, I don't know, natural, whatever.
Chief, do you know anything like this?
Um, I believe the different techniques of the new, you have some, some variations on different types of hunting. Um, also, the idea of, um, for the food population, for, um, for control type of measures to try to prevent that, and then, um, also looking at where they are eating and passing something where people are not allowed to put salt plates out or feed the deer, try to prevent in those ways as well.
City Manager, do you know of any people within City Limits of Cape Girardeau who do typically put out food for deer? Are there any reports of this? Is that something that happens?
Um, not recently. I've, um, I've never come across any instance where I've seen people, um, what's the word for it? Support deer coming into their, um, yard and their neighborhood, so, you know.
And I also would tell, is there, would there be a specific area that these deer were trapped, did they release somewhere specific, I mean, just outside of the limits? Would they be transported to somewhere, a certain limit away, certain amount of distance away?
Um, well, what I suggested, we could probably find some way to convoy these trapped deer, put them onto some type of, um, cargo, like, vehicle, and transport them to another location. But at this instance, I don't know if that can be done. I don't know if we have the funds for that, so that's also something I'll have to come back around and check on.
City Manager, would it be so expensive that we, uh, hired professionals to kill, kill the deer, and then the meat that was processed from that, we donate it to the families that can't afford a whole lot of food, to take their, those sandwiches for just a little more money? Do you have anything like this?
I think if we could, um, look at a combination of, we have individuals who are highly skilled and involved, who maybe either do it voluntarily, with their organized effort, or a low-end price, um, it may, uh, maybe about the same or a little bit less than if we were trapping the possibility to murder.
City Manager, do you know of any other counties within City of Missouri that have been allowing for the deer hunts as, or trapping as opposed to dealing?
I'm pretty sure neighboring communities such as maybe Jackson or Scott City probably been having similar issues because I feel like we're the, we're the most, um, non, uh, I don't know if I can put it, people. Uh, our area isn't as open as most of the communities that we are surrounded by. Yeah, urban, there we go. It's not as urban as other communities that we're surrounded by, so I'm pretty sure what we're getting is the after shock of what they're getting, because they're probably getting there.
Have, have you heard of any, like, really successful ventures, I should say, as the, as one of those cities has, um, implemented one of these programs, either the trapping or, uh, urban deer hunting?
Um, Chief, have you come across any successes in the trapping and the hunting of the deer?
I think the, um, successful communities that have, have been, um, they're limited on the type of deer that they have and the type of tracking that they're using. There are some deer that are, um, they're able to be trapped with the reaction that they have with being trapped versus other types of deer. So, I think a lot of them supplement on the type of deer that they're hunting. Yeah, so as it seems, I think it's logical to bring up the issue again because it doesn't seem to be going anywhere, not doing anything about it. So, I don't know if anybody here is going to agree, but I think, I make a motion to bring back up the deer management issue in the next election. Is that a motion?
Do we vote our motion? Yes, okay, so we take a vote to enter the deer, or, is it a guy's vote? Into the next, out of the election? All right, so. City Manager, I will vote, um, suppose we can start with one?
Yeah, why not?
Here.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Suppose, if we want, well, let's do the vote. Um, next item for discussion would be, uh, safety concerns for motorized bicycles, mopeds, gears. It's about 13-03, so, time for discussion. We have all, um, um, reports, opinions.
The topic is, like, there was a survey taken on the issue, um, and there were some polls taken, and there's also, like, a blog where people left comments, and someone said that maybe the city should make this real simple by just having the scooters ride on 6th Street that follows the simple rules, licensing, and home qualifications as motorcycle riders. Um, I really agree with this statement. I thought that maybe this would be a good way to approach the issue, have it follow certain requirements, like motorcycle riders, who know their speeds, could be different. Uh, there are really similar things between the qualification that we must have.
I think that's a valid point, however, um, I've noticed that most of the accidents and casualties that are most common, the mopeds and scooters, are from college students in this area, and there doesn't really seem to be much of a complaint against the new regulations that have been into effect, so I don't know if we necessarily need to bring it back up again because the safety required requirements are definitely necessary and, um, seem to be making a difference in the safety of those vehicles. So, I don't really think we need to do much about this issue. I would just leave the effect, I know, that if there's senior members on this side.
I agree, because, um, we should let the issues, uh, let the, um, the rules stand and see whether we let them develop and see how they do, any reason of the issue in a year or so, but as of now, I feel that they're, they're...
I agree as well. We should let the current ordinance stand and see what develops from that because right now, we don't really have that much data to go on to justify, um, putting in, like, circuit regulations.
So, are you making the motion? No, just, just.
So, I make a motion to let the ordinance stand. I would like to say the motion.
Okay, motion there. Um, votes in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, all right. Bring it up, Council. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is, um, no parking anytime in bicycle lanes or being, uh, bicycle, that's, that's, uh, the discussion of that, and what our opinions.
Have there been any complaints by any residents of the city as to the biking lanes against them?
Um, not that I know of so far. Um, most areas that do have the biking, uh, are areas that are obviously not used for parking, so no one had any, any complaints. So, no, no, no.
Have there been any requests for more biking strips by bikers in the city?
Uh, Chief, do you have any idea about this?
Um, we have received through Cyclops some requests for additional lanes to, um, close up some areas that are not closed to the lanes at this point in time. The city engineering's offices look at it, though, and a lot of those streets are fairly narrow and a lot of them may have on-street parking, so it may be a little bit more controversial than the, like, for a, for a mission. I would assume that by strapping the lanes for bikers, they are much more safe now since they're driving down the street. Um, but, City Manager, do you know how approximately how many, um, citizens use their bikes as a means of transportation?
I would like to say less than fifty percent of the community. Um, a lot of people do like to get out and exercise, but usually they walk. Um, biking is, is a hobby nowadays, though, but, so, it's not exactly put to a number, obviously factors. Yeah, I can kind of come back to that.
City Manager, do you have a number of accidents related to bikers within the city of Cape?
Um, I'm, I'm pretty sure it is around seventy, um, every three months, I'm going to, um, people, people really, uh, people are becoming really stupid on those vehicles. I could go there and, um...
Does it reduce at all since the, um, since putting in the bicycles?
Uh, yes, because they're, um, they're not as much on-road, um, they're, they're more, um, grateful for their lives, as I would like to say, and so, I, I would like to say that they, uh, they, they don't, it's been going badly.
City Manager, do you know approximately how much we would have to take from our budget to, uh, put in these lanes for bikers, uh, where there aren't any right now? Do you know how much that would take?
Um, City, Chief, do you have any idea?
If you were to look at the map, the maps you have in your packet, for, um, about a hundred and fifty thousand, you were able to do the Lexington Striping, the Spur Striping, and the Silver Strikes. So, depending on how much more lanes, I mean, more lanes council would want to do, that could give you a feel for how many lanes we can do for about a hundred and fifty thousand.
City Manager, do you know the number of accidents on not, not the residential streets that are supposedly more dangerous and narrower for bikers? Is there a higher number of accidents there, or?
Yes, because there's not much room for the bikers to maneuver and to, like, uh, give, like, they, um, they usually have enough room to get where they need to be, but it's like they have to pay attention every second. So, the ones that, you know, they're off for a second, don't pay attention, they accidentally get into the road and they get squashed up above, so I would just have to say, yes, in those areas, those people are, uh, more, need to be more precautious of their actions.
Do you know the number of people who use the, um, roads that are not currently strided for bike, use for shared bikes?
That I'll have to get back on to later, I can do, um, an evaluation.
Okay, so it seems from this map that there's a really good loop going on, but on the center, there's really not very many routes for bikes, and so, if a biker wants to be safe, they have to go pretty much all the way around the city to get to where they want to go. Um, and then maybe some on the outsides that might require striding as well. So, um, I think that we should... So, um, I think that we should see in our budget if it's okay to add some more striding for, maybe just research. City manager, that would be okay, to see how much it costs and see if that would even be appropriate for the streets that are more narrow.
Yes, that'll be fine, I can get on there right away.
City manager, I would like to ask, about, do you know a percentage about how much of downtown Cape Girardeau in the area that is more heavily populated for residential living has sidewalks?
Uh, close, um, close to about eighty percent of downtown Cape Girardeau has sidewalks. Leading from, uh, I think leading from the McDonald's on Broadway all the way down and from every other direction. So, yeah, eighty percent.
I, I don't know how effective this would be, but maybe instead of all those narrow streets, instead of being in bike lanes, maybe put up signs saying that we could use the sidewalks and warning joggers, walkers, people walk their dogs and whatnot that they could be sharing. I don't know how effective that would be since how, I don't know the, how wide the sidewalks are, but maybe that would just save a little bit of money and be kind of a compromise source for both bikers and the narrow streets.
I file for a motion to, I suppose, allow in certain areas bikers to use the sidewalks when they cannot use the streets because it is too dangerous.
Motion carried, all votes in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Disposed? Motion carried? Okay, the next item that's on the agenda is noise ordinance. Noise ordinance for outdoor music, um, sort of the downtown area, open discussion.
City manager, do you know the qualifications or how hard it would be for these people to get those permits? What would they have to prove or show would be required for them to obtain these permits?
Do you have any ideas, gee?
Um, I think the, the first test that we would, or the first question we would ask them is why they feel they would need something different. And it would have to be a case by case if they were going to have a fund rate or if they were going to want to extend it just maybe an hour beyond what we have in here. And we feel based on this surrounding neighborhood that maybe that would be an inappropriate change. So it's, it's hard to answer, the first question to them would be is, is the reason why? And then they would have to evaluate the environment and then they would monitor to make sure they conform with that.
City manager, do you have a number of complaints as opposed to previous complaints since before and after we put in this ordinance? Have there been less or more, or a couple percent?
Well, I haven't gotten into that information, but I can see what I can scoop up and give it to you immediately.
Okay, so I've been being aware of a certain number of complaints around the downtown area just because there does seem to be during the summer here, a lot of noise and disruption during the night turn hours. And even with the noise ordinance, it seems to be a little too late. However, I think that, as it stands, the noise ordinance seems to be very fair in regards to businesses and residents. And so, I mean, I'm not really sure what to do with those complaints, except first I maybe pick one place to point it. Because I think that, um, I think for the outdoor music venues, they do have the right to play music. And as we're growing as a city, we want to be a fun environment, we want to draw people and have a great time. And so I think that this is a fair ordinance for all the times listed. And that if, if people want a special permit, then they can ask for it and it can be fairly given, but I don't think, I don't think there's something wrong with that.
I agree.
I don't think the complaints are fair because we should never go into it where the noise is. And that's, you know, they still trust.
I have a question, city manager, is there any way we could limit the non-permit, if certain places could get like? Because if they keep asking for a permit after permit, that's a little bit annoying for the people that live there. And I understand what she was saying, they'll pick one place to live. But if they're constantly having event after event that's causing a lot of noise, is there any way we could have them only sort of pull the, uh, of permits are allowed to have?
Yes, I think that would be a good idea because we should permit one for like each area and for only a certain period of time. And then maybe they can get another one every week or every month or so. So they have to use their special package on special occasions not for their own benefit.
City manager, do you have an estimate of how many special permits I do have?
Pretty weird, say, um, twelve months. Uh, I'm pretty sure there's about, there's about three to five hundred given out. Because so many, um, special events go on at a given time, like there can be like twenty in a day or there can be, you know, multiple in a week. So, yeah, if you give out many because they have good reason and most, most likely because they're in an area where people don't mind.
City manager, are you referring to the number of events that are hap- that do happen where a noise complaint could be put into place? The, um, like, when the city gives permission, I suppose? For that event to happen as opposed to the number of buildings which, and businesses which have permits have that type of event prepared? You're speaking to the number of events as opposed to the business?
Yes, yes, yes. Especially our curators.
It is a crazy how it's.
Especially after they're finding people from hell.
I feel as though the, um, the ordinance that's in place is extremely fair. I agree with what my community council member has said earlier, that the, um, it seems fair. And if they complain further, I, I agree that they should have followed this previously when looking for housing. It is a college town, we are known as a college town, they are really downtown, they are bars. And I feel as though it's extremely fair and we should believe that that is.
Uh, I have a hidden opinion. I believe that we have on one hand, people who can't afford to live outside of the downtown area where they have to endure the noise levels of the downtown living. But then on this hand, you know, there's, um, that area is meant for those who need to have their music cranked up a little bit because they're partying, because that area is meant to have, you know, that kind of environment. So it's kind of, it's bad for those people, but it's not their fault because they can afford it. And then it's these people who, they're allowed to be here because this is the environment that we've set up.
I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying, however, I think that as the ordinance stands, there really can't be very much disruption, you know, past the standard times. And if there is, then it will be shut down when the news will come. And then, um, I think that my fellow councilwoman had a good idea of limiting the number of permits. Maybe we should, um, check into that because I don't know if there is a limit, is, do you know if there is?
Um, yeah, I'll check on that. Maybe we do.
Um, so maybe we should check on that before we leave it, that's probably an idea because I understand what you're saying. I've really pictured downtown Cape Girardeau as just a crazy zoo of parties. I think that they, they do, they're careful to only give the, um, special permits to parties that need it. And they're not just trying to put a structure, they're trying to have a good time and they won't need a structure like that.
I'd like to make a motion to leave the ordinance on the stands until we have more information and are able to do the situation.
Seconded up? Uh, was it there? Um, opposed? Okay, um, before we, uh, agenda is smoking bans in public places. Did have, um, law, uh, public, I, so any discussion?
Um, considering the number of in favor and opposed was so close, I think the people's kind of view on this subject is evolving. And I also think that the, the limits they were trying to, to have originally might have been too strict. So maybe less strict, uh, less strict ordinance could be adopted. You could go for that, and maybe more time and see. It's smoking is something that has become less popular over time, so maybe it's rather risky for time.
I agree with my councilwoman, uh, maybe instead of the smoking ban in all public places, we could, uh, make it to where it was in family oriented places, there was a smoking ban. Or if you didn't have any children, uh, people that were looking to have a big family at one time. But ob- obviously in places such as bars and clubs and things like that, we know that there is a higher population of people that do choose to smoke. So we could leave that to where they were allowed to interfere in certain areas, but maybe to where they could smoke in family oriented places.
I agree, good idea.
City manager, do you know if a smoking ban were put in place for restaurants, if they would lose any business? And if they would lose business, how much money would they lose from the ban?
Well, I say if they did ban certain smoking, like, um, let's say maybe like Red Lobster or Texas Roadhouse. If they supposedly shut down banning, uh, smoking, they would lose business. And that would depend on the amount of people they lose and, you know, of course what they order, what they like to eat. Do they go in there to have their time and drink at the bar, or do they go in there and have a fine meal? So it all depends on how many people go in and what they get.
Um, I would like to say something, uh, what he was saying, if these, if the smoking ban were put in place, they would lose business. However, what about those people that choose to avoid those places that have smoking just because they don't want to be in that environment? Well, maybe they would now, she would go back to those places with business. So it could possibly, instead of decreasing the amount of business again, it could actually increase it. Because there's a less, um, smoking population now than there was in the past.
I was hearing everybody saying, however, in my opinion, I think that, um, no smoking is up to a personal, um, business or restaurant. And it's up to them to decide. Now as the like major chain businesses, maybe it's not up to their, their whole company. But I think there are definitely some restaurants and places in Cape that have their image on that kind of activity, I guess. So I don't think that we need a whole citywide ordinance, I think it should be up to each business.
We, we do have family owned businesses in this town, such as Cupping Court, who don't allow indoor smoking, but they do allow outdoor smoking in front of their establishment.
City manager, is there a noticeable fact, does the secondhand smoke still enter the building even if it's outside? Or is it totally separated and if they smoke outside, there's no effect on those inside?
Well, I'm pretty sure that, um, outdoor smoking doesn't, you know, go straight indoors. So, I mean, uh, I don't think there is any exact way to tell, but I can try to find something if you would like to do.
I feel as though in this case, I agree with what my councilwoman just said, that private institutions should be allowed to choose whether or not they would allow smoking. But I feel as though what we can do and enforce in the public places, we should perhaps ban the smoking. Make a commitment to this petition to ban smoking within enclosed areas, but allow it outside, maybe a certain distance away from, like, the doors, twenty, fifty years old. And maybe that would be kind of a compromise to give the freedom of choice to both parties.
I agree. I see what you're saying, but is that including like bars and?
No, like, um, uh, city places, um, like if you were to go, if you were to go to the O Sage Center perhaps and walk in, it would be, uh, because it is something that the city is in charge of, you really don't, uh, they will smoke inside, but you could still smoke in front of the building outside. So not like bars and like privately owned businesses, corporations, like shops and stuff downtown. They would, uh, they'd be allowed to choose for themselves, just within the public areas of the, the city of Cape, I would say.
Like, um, such as like Cape Splash, the water park. Um, they can make passes to go outside in front of the establishment to smoke, but only for a certain period of time or else they will have to repay to get back in.
City manager, do you know any other cases in there, access to someone's purpose, what you have already?
I can surely find out though, I can surely find out if they, um, they have what it is outside of this area. Do you see what they've done, run the situation?
You know, I don't really think it would, um, affect the businesses too bad if it were a smoking ban. Um, like if it was St. Louis on a Friday or Saturday night or any, had a leak there, their restaurants are always visiting, there's, there's no fans there. Or Illinois, I think the whole state has banned and there's no exposure to people. I think it's just, like I said, an evolving issue, some people really don't like cigarettes, but some people really like their cigarettes. Very good, very, very nice.
So as it seems, are we needing to order more of a maybe compromise smoking ban? Or are we just going to leave it and hope that Cape gets their?
I think we should amend, amend this plan, make it a little more compromise.
And then put a vote to it later.
Because you could just like, you could just put it off completely. I'm pretty sure that nobody like needs to, like, whenever they go into a public place, they're just like, I need to smoke right here, right now. If somebody's like that, then I guess we'll have to deal with them, but they'll get over it eventually, I'm sure, so. But, you know, your decision, council.
So if you get the decision, it's not something you can really control?
You can control it for thirty minutes while you're enjoying a meal or enjoying a good swim.
I understand.
Smoke in a pool, people.
I believe that in these situations, the common law fair enough, the other people should be taken into account other than the one person's desire to smoke. Because if you were in the area with their kids, you're damaging their health maybe later on. From studies done on secondhand smoke, it's proven. And so we shouldn't be allowing people to, just because they don't smoke, be hurting our future generations. However, I do agree that certain places should be allowed to smoke and I am for an amendment to the current policy being put forward.
I would like to make a motion to amend the current policy that we have and have the ready to amend it. And then come and report to us in the dinner because they have at a later time, rest to vote to put out to the public.
Do you have a second?
Okay, um, all votes in favor?
Um, hi.
All opposed? Okay. So the next one. The next item on the agenda is the subject of texting while driving.
City manager, do you know how many arrests are made or tickets are now on the subject of somebody texting while they're driving?
Uh, do you, do you hear anything on this? No, you will repeat it. No, you will already be there.
Yeah, no. Uh, this is, um, a, a lot that, that is a little tricky for us to pull people over on. So we've been a little hesitant to be too aggressive. Um, because we focus more on some speeding and some running red lights at sort of intersections and that type of stuff. But we have pulled over probably, um, since it's been created, maybe about five a month. And they've been the more, uh, the more in-your-face type of situations.
City manager, do you know if the amount of accidents or, uh, anything that occurred that had to go along with this texting, has it decreased since this legislation was put in place where people, people were being attacked?
Well, um, I have to do some more research on that, but I'm pretty sure it has. Because our community isn't the only one that tries to stop people from texting and driving. You know, AT&T and their entire movement on with their phones, they're always putting a sticker on it saying, "No texting while driving." So I don't think it's just our legislation that's probably decreasing it. I just think it's the whole world's concept of it.
Do you think it's been a significant increase, however? If you were to approximate, would you say it's a significant? Or are there still accidents going on, which are due to texting?
Um, I'm pretty sure there's, I don't know if it's been significant per se. It's probably been, you know, in the middle. It hasn't been to a small degree decrease, but it hasn't been to a large degree. Because people always, you know, they hear about it's bad, texting and driving, but they still want to communicate while they're, you know, in control of their vehicle. Some people know how to do it, some people can handle it, but still bear a gritted up bit for it.
So as this legislation stands, it says you must, uh, if a person under twenty-one years of age operating a vehicle, uh, texting while driving. However, you're not always going to know if a police officer is sitting there, uh, he's not going to know if that person's only twenty-one, can I stop them? So, uh, why would we not just expand that to the all ages, no texting while driving? It's just irresponsible.
Um, but I wanted to answer your question before I go to the next one. Um, I looked up research about this, and it seems as though over fifty percent of people do text and drive. And as much as people think that they can multitask, it doubles your reaction time, which is more than drunk drivers. And so this is far above any danger to not just you, but everybody else on the road. And so I feel that very strict legislation needs to be passed because it's not just your right, but it's the right of everybody that you're putting in harm. And so I, that does agree with your idea to make it illegal for everybody to text and drive. But then again, I think we're still faced with the challenge of police officials to pull people over under the suspicion that you are texting and driving. Because, I mean, I think anybody you talk to, they think they're pretty good at hiding, texting and driving. And so it's, it's, I think it's really hard for them to even, I don't know, um, pull someone over under the idea that they're texting because they can't prove it, they can't see their phone. So somebody could just fly themselves out and say they can do something. So I don't know if that will even be effective.
Well, um, obviously, we don't want any accidents to happen if people do to texting while driving. But in very many ways, we could make a stricter or more harsh punishment for those that are found to be in an accident because they were texting. Is there any way to that, someone?
Chief, do you, does any way to punish those for texting and driving who got injured while doing things?
A more harsh punishment, possibly, to instill some type of, uh, negative reinforcement where they would not want to text while.
Yeah, and I think so, and, and you would obviously need to work on municipal laws to see if, um, you can add language that would allow us to search the history of the phone as well in, 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 in investigation for that.
Because I would think it would be hard to just pull people over. Because with all the smartphones nowadays, they have, like, music on the phones, and they play that in their car, so they could be searching for a song and they hop sees them, they're like, hey! But definitely, if they get an accident because they were texting, it's not a good deal. So something should go down with that.
I agree that there's a lot of gray area, and it's going to be really hard to, um, end wars. But, you know, as it stands, we definitely need something more harsh. And maybe we can figure out, city manager, if you can work with some of your people on, a way to maybe get rid of some of that gray area. Um, I don't know if anybody would be for, maybe just banning all cell phone use. Any, you know, music, because distracted driving kills so many people. Even the driver that is distracted and innocent people. So, um, I don't know how well that would go. But I don't think texting, because if you're looking at your phone, you're not looking at the road. So I don't think that's the only reason people are getting announcements.
Um, I would like to put in a motion, maybe an idea to put this on that board around, and we have more information regarding, uh, accidents and the increase or decrease, uh, and, and bring this up at a later date to possibly amend this to make changes to it.
I'm, I don't agree with that. Because I think this is a big problem now, and it's killing people now. And so I think that while we can put it away and find more information while we're doing that, something needs to be done so that we can help the people who are getting accidents and who are dying in the moment, and today, and tomorrow. And I don't want to waste any time. So I think that while we do need to do some research and figure out a way to get rid of the whole problem, I think that we need to first start by banning all texting and driving. I think that'd be a good place to start before we.
So, so make an ordinance and then tell them we're going to make a less strict ordinance?
Definitely. Do you agree? Maybe we could make some changes like they're suggesting now, some, some certain changes. But then make more changes later on, when we have more information, but make.
I, yeah, I think our first step should be to ban texting in all ages. And then, you know, if we get more information and, as we, if we see how that goes and see if it, we can make it stricter from there. But I think it just needs to get stricter and stricter.
I agree. I feel as in this case, this isn't something that we would go back from and say that, while it's less strict, we can make it less strict because it's not a bunch of problems. It is a problem for the community. And it's not only that, but then it would also give policemen a much more stable, defined point of, yes, I can pull this person out if they were texting. I don't know if they are under twenty-one, so I might not be able to do this. That person's definitely texting, they are not allowed to do that, I can pull them over. Also, I know a lot of adults, older adults, who perhaps aren't quite as phone savvy as some younger people, who, while they want to text, cannot text quite as well as maybe some younger people who do it a lot. So maybe that would stop them because they do, they are more sure that they tend to follow rules better. So while, and maybe it would put just as much of a damper on teen texting and driving, it would definitely put a lot more of a, a lock on older people, I believe. And so it would generally decrease the amount of texting while driving. So perhaps just put a outright, no texting while driving, we can see what's been tried.
Are we saying no texting while your vehicle is in motion? Or can you text while you're at a stoplight or a stop sign?
Oh, cool.
And I know personally, and most people I know, texting at a stoplight or a stop sign, because why would you be sitting there just chilling in your car? You get straight at the stoplight.
I don't know why we take this second.
And so, so are we saying we can text while our vehicle is stopped, not in motion?
Or if our car is officially turned on?
Yeah, are we saying, always, as soon as you step in your car and your vehicle's on, you cannot text? Or are we saying if you're at a stop sign or a stop light and you're, you're standing in the same place for a prolonged period of time, is that fine?
Also, are we just, are we just talking about texting? Are we talking about using your phone, period, while driving?
I think she mentioned that you can use your phone, period.
Because, I mean, like, you got, like, you can use your phone for, you know, people plugging in for music. People plug it in, um, for GPS, yes, GPS, that's what I was thinking about. So, I mean, like, you can pull them over, but I don't know. It's, it's a really hard, um, thing to.
In this case, in this case, I feel, just for now, while we get more information, we just need to stop texting. Sending electronic messages, emails, instant messages, texts. You can use your phone for GPS, you can use your phone to play music in your car. And I think that we should allow, allow texting while at a stoplight. As long as you pay attention, you're not just sitting there texting while ten people behind you are honking at you to go. I feel that, sitting there, if you're at a stoplight, it's a red light, you should be able to text. So no texting while your car is in motion.
Right, so is that a motion?
I would like to make a motion.
Should just, or when you put a patient, you had a motion in a second to put all of it on the back burner. So if you call a vote, you can vote yes or no on that, and then make a motion in a second after that, because we want to go down for another motion. But you do have one that was already made a second.
So we need to put it on the first motion.
Yeah, to get more information from staff and city manager, and then bring it up at a later meeting. So, all those, um, in favor of postponing it at a later date?
I think you can use your phone.
Hey, you want to vote?
Uh, aye.
Okay, motion denied.
Now, on to the next one. I make a motion to stop all texting for people of all age while your vehicle is in motion. And to get more information on using cell phones within motor vehicles.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Opposed? Which is the housing of chickens within the city limits, you know? Um, you'd be great in a pot.
Uh, also, about chickens, they hit in, uh, city areas. I feel like if a chicken came into my yard, I'd freak out there. My, it's weird. I mean, in, in my neighborhood, you're, you're right next to each other, so. Maybe my, maybe in, if it's in city limits, but you have a bigger space and you get it, like, approved by the city, it's all good.
Within a certain amount of feet, it cannot be within a certain amount of feet of other residences.
Yeah, they have a big enough yard.
Chickens by nature are roaming creatures. I think, I think most people, most people who have chickens know that they need to have a fence. They don't just want their chickens to be able to roam and go out on the street.
What if a chicken jumps in face?
Chickens can't.
Chickens can fly. The hell, like, a dog or something. That's very clever.
I feel like, the dogs, I'm joking, that's not.
There is, we have to make a movie about it.
That would be a, a freak incident.
It should be allowed if you had enough space and if you weren't just letting them go all around and if the noise was too much. So, city manager, is there any complaints? I don't even, are there people with chickens in this town? I know there's one man. And if there may be, have there been any complaints as to the noise or?
Well, I have no, um, no information on this subject, besides that one man who came in with his chickens and his eggs. Um, I don't, unless he lived close, like, I don't have any information on this, but if he had been living close to someone, I'm pretty sure he probably would have had complaints. But at this moment, I don't know anything, so I'll get on this.
City manager, do you know what standards are already in place? Um, if, if they wanted to have a chick, chickens, or any chicken, uh, in the residence, are there any standards that they would have to meet?
Um, yeah, there's like, there's, um, um, there's like certain types of, uh, birds, if you can, is what I'm saying here. Uh, maximum numbers, the location, uh.
I'm saying just in your box, the chickens, not other eggs.
Okay.
So, you can't have any chickens. So there's nothing in place.
There are not, chickens are not allowed. They're like, for keep, right, to be kept.
Farm animals, I don't think.
No, I'm pretty sure, I'm, I'm just saying.
No chickens.
But there is an ordinance in Columbia, there's been a connection, eat ten chickens, and then certain restrictions are in place, like there can't be a nuisance, you can't have a rooster. And so could we bring that to faith? Have there been, city manager, have there been, um, problems with that, ordinance in Columbia?
Uh, do you, do you know anything about Colombian, um?
The, the information we have is that that compromise in Columbia has been very large, so you think it's impossible.
Okay, thank you. So if it's positive, so, I mean, why wouldn't we?
I, yeah, I, I agree because, and, you know, in my area, where I live, there are, you know, farms. I, you can say that are in city limits. And so it wouldn't be a nuisance to anybody because nobody lives close. And so if somebody were to want to have chickens, I think that makes sense. And if they're going to keep them clean and healthy and in a cage and want fresh eggs, I think.
Does anyone on council believe that the chickens in our area would attract predator animals?
No.
No.
If they're in an enclosed, fenced-in area and kept in control, I don't really see wolves or.
Not anymore than what you already have, or they have, cats and dogs.
Okay. So, I figure stray dogs could probably, you know, cause a problem for the person housing the chickens.
Stray dogs could also cause a problem for the person with the cat.
Yeah. And it's also the person's responsibility to keep their, um, chickens safe, so the city doesn't need to be responsible for them keeping their chickens out of that, maybe being heard, that's its fault.
Okay.
So we have to declare, are we voting on, like, a census?
Oh, I call for a motion to allow for chickens in the, as a similar ordinance in Columbia, to allow for chickens, maximum of ten, to be within the city limits as long as they're kept a certain distance away from other residences, kept clean, and not allowed to create a nuisance.
I know what you're saying.
Know what you're saying.
I second the chicken ordinance.
Okay, um, all those, um, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Chicken!
Okay, um, is there any other business, um, now, I don't know if you have any items for council? Um, by the city council members, by the public, or even, so, it's time, anyone else? No?
Yes.
It's easy, um. I make a motion to adjourn speed.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.